I'd like to call the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Cary for Tuesday, April 5, 2016, to order with roll call, please.
Kraus?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Kozler?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Cavelli?
Here.
Dudek?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(audience clapping) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to the open forum, where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any other matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. I have several people that have signed in. Are you here talking about something that's on the agenda, or is there something else that you want to talk about?
I may want to call them out.
Okay. Jim Remza?
I want to talk about Meyer.
Okay, well, you can come up and talk about that now.
Jim Remza, 9 Tammerac Court, Cary. I guess that through the meeting of the whole, and find that you spent a whole hour talking about design of the property. And what was the cost of that by Hitchcock for the design?
It's not completed yet. We're about halfway through the project. Total design cost for this phase was $16,000. Those are dedicated dollars from the Land Conservancy Fund paid into the village from Meyer that are used for typically park programming purposes. We haven't, I don't believe, spent any of it as of yet. There's a $1.7 million balance in the fund.
I just find it, you know, almost like putting the cart before the horse. You don't know what the property's going to end up because you haven't voted on their requests for an extension. So you don't know what the property's going to look at. So I find it just not a good use of funds to pay somebody to do a design on something that's just pie in the sky because you don't know what the end product's going to be. Just my opinion. The new map that was thrown up appeared to show a greater portion in Algonquin than what was presented at the last meeting with Meyer. I guess...
Yes, sir.
It was my understanding Meyer, the Algonquin line ran across here, and now you've got a new section that you say is in Algonquin.
If that was not clear, the yellow is correct.
Okay. All right. Because that's not the impression I got from the last meeting, the board meeting with Meyer and everything like that. That's not the design that they threw up there. Just another, I don't know, strange. Am I mistaken on that?
No, I mean, I can go back and check what was said on the record, but I know it's correct, and it's what's yellow on that map that you have in your hand.
I know it isn't. I don't know what was said on the record, but I just know that the maps they threw up threw a different line of Algonquin. So there's much more of the Meyer property in there.
I would just say on that part, though, that my understanding was that that portion was in Algonquin when I saw the map at the hearing.
Yeah. Okay. Just to reiterate, I've been at a lot of these meetings over the last 25 years as far as what the Fox Trails residents like or don't like regarding the Meyer proposal for mining. And I'm here just to tell you that unanimously, they asked the board to follow the ZBA's recommendation to reject the Meyer's request for an extension. That was loud and clear by all the meetings and all the residents. So it appears to me that the board already is leaning for an extension. When you start getting designs and things like that on what you don't even know the end product's going to be, I think that's certainly a waste of funds and not in following the residents' desires. The penalty that they agreed to for $100,000 a month to continue mining should be used to reimburse the residents that are impacted by, number one, the home values, the dust, the noise. And here, I get the impression that the board's willing to extend it because you've got dollar signs in front of your eyes, and you're willing to throw the Fox Trails residents under the bus for a few bucks. I think many of you have already drunk the Meyer material Kool-Aid. That project, that design you just discussed and you continue to discuss is just pie in the sky. It has no basis in reality. The residents want the extension rejected. They want the mining completed on time, and we're not in favor of an extension. I propose and ask you to reject the extension. Move forward with the annexation with Algonquin for that property. How can you talk about the design of the property when you don't have any jurisdiction over the two-thirds of that property? So, number two, I would say go forward with discussions for annexation so that you know what you're dealing with, you know who controls the property. And any further designs is all pie in the sky, so I wouldn't waste any more money on that until you resolve these first two items. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Stockelberg?
Yeah. Hey. Frank Stockelberg. I'm at 32 Verdene Way in Cary, Illinois. I guess I missed the last, I missed out on the last board meeting because I must have left early at that time. And there were some accusations that were thrown, and I'm not here to throw them at anybody else or anybody in particular about the apartment buildings on Three Oaks Road. I'm not into a slug-legged match as far as getting in the mud with somebody. But I think the appropriate, it was not very appropriate what was said and what was done at that meeting as far as by somebody. I think this thing ought to go through very easily and very carefully, and I should support going into that housing development as far as on, or the apartment development on Three Oaks Road. I think it is needed in the Village of Cary. And I think that it'll be an asset to our village as far as getting that land built up and developed, that it's going to bring in more people and more property and everything else, more property development area as far as commercial, as well as industrial and everything else around here. And it is not going to be what everybody else thinks as far as bringing in lower-class people. No, it is not. It's going to bring in regular common people here in this village. And this is what we want to retain in this village. We want to retain the residents. Or do we want to kick the residents up to Harvard or Hebron or Wisconsin? I'd rather see them retained within this village. Thank you.
Rita Davenport?
This is about the Cambria amendment.
Okay. Okay. Well, you can come up at that time when we call that, okay? It looks like Kimmy Palumbo?
Jenny.
What, are you here to talk about, okay, Cambria. So we'll talk to you at that time. Dorothy? Were you here to talk about the Pearl Development?
Yes, please.
Did you, could you have a seat until we call that item up? We have a whole separate section.
Thank you. I'd like to hear it.
Okay. Thank you. And Chuck Fox?
Pearl.
On Pearl or Cambria?
Pearl.
Pearl, okay. All right. Moving on to regular business right now. Got a couple of proclamations here. Our first proclamation is a National Service Recognition Day, which is April 5, 2016, where service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as along a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas American Corpses and Senior Corpses participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas American Corpses and Senior Corpses participants serve in more than 6,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas eight AmeriCorps vistas serve Northern Illinois Food Bank, helping to solve hunger in our community, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve with both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique private-public partnership that invests community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an extensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in the future endeavors, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 5, 2016. Therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mark Countert, Mayor of the Village of Cary, do hereby proclaim April 5, 2016, as National Service Recognition Days and encourage residents to recognize a positive impact of national service in our village, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities, dated this 5th day of April 2016. And we have one more. We have a proclamation for the 2016 Telecommunicator Week, April 10 through the 16, 2016, where as over half a million dedicated men and women are engaged in the operation of emergency response systems for federal, state, and local government entities throughout the United States, whereas these individuals are entrusted with the responsibility for responding to telephone calls from the general public for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance, and for dispatching such assistance to help save lives and property of our citizens, and whereas in the Village of Cary, such calls for assistance include not only police, fire, and emergency medical service calls, but also encompass governmental communications related to highway safety and maintenance activities, parks and recreational recreation festivities, and other village services in the community, all of which serve as a source of village pride and identity. And whereas the Southeast Emergency Communications, otherwise known as CCOM, Center Telecommunicators, as part of the Americas Public Safety Telecommunicators daily service Cary citizens in countless ways, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the Village Board of Village of Cary, Mayor McHenry Illinois, in recognitions of all telecommunicators and especially in appreciation of all serving the Village of Cary, proclaim the week of April 10 through the 16, 2016, as Telecommunicator Week, and encourage everyone to be aware of the dedication, professionalism, and property and lifesaving efforts put forth by our telecommunicators. Be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation shall be posted in the Police Department and sent to CCOM to service recognition of CCOM employees, dated this 5th day of April 2016. Thank you. And now, I'm going to add one thing. I had a great meeting last night with a bunch of our young people from the Boy Scouts. We were here till about a quarter to nine last night. I have to tell you what intriguing questions these young men ask. I mean, they all sat here in our chairs, you know, trying to throw out different questions to talk about what's going on in the village. They are keenfully aware of a lot of the things that are happening in this. I don't know if it's due to them talking to their parents or whatever, but they asked a lot of very relevant questions, and it was really a great opportunity to engage with the young people and kind of set the record straight on things that are going on. And, you know, one of the questions is, why do we have so much vacant property in Cary? And I'm like, well, you got an hour? But, you know, it was a really great opportunity to talk and listen to what they see and what they hear and what they want to have. They want to have a lot more fast food restaurants, as you can imagine. And I said, well, we've got a couple more coming, but we're going to broaden that horizon here shortly, I hope. So it was a great meeting. We talked about the history of the building, and we toured all the different locations. So that was a really fun evening, and it went by in a blink. So I want to thank the Boy Scouts for coming in again. And now we're going to have to talk about an update on Meyer material petition. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. For those that weren't with us, at the 6 o'clock committee, the whole session, the Village Board, through committee process, reviewed an annexation proposal that would essentially involve the de-annexation of property in the Village of Algonquin, Jason to the Meyer pit site, into potentially being incorporated into the Village of Cary, the village, as part of a conceptual park design, which was called out for initially in 2008 when Meyer Materials mining agreement was initially approved by the village, is now being looked at, and some of the jurisdictional boundaries are challenging on the site. Essentially, half of it today is in Cary. Half of it is in Algonquin. Village of Algonquin has offered conceptually to allow the property to go into Cary, including some commercial property on the Route 31 corridor, in, with some consideration of the village regarding some sales tax sharing for a site on 31, as well as some discussion about if there's ever a park on the pit site. Algonquin residents would like to have the same cost privileges as Cary residents. So it's a preliminary discussion. We reviewed a park plan that I do have copies of. If you weren't able to join us, it's in the public packet. It's online. I have some copies for you as well. We talked conceptually about some park uses that are possible on the site. It's about 89-acre lake, if fully mined, and certainly a site that, from a passive recreation and low-impact recreation, meaning not sports fields, not some kind of racetracks, honestly, out there, more of a biking, natural areas type uses is possible. The board asked me to get additional costs on a conceptual plan, which we will do, and, you know, to think about some contingencies if now the discussed three-year extension as opposed to a four-year extension was initially discussed earlier in March. If it's a three-year or two-year extension, how might that play into park development and some of the site mining? So that continues to occur. As it was left the committee, as far as I understand, we have call out for a vote on April 19, unless I hear otherwise. We, of course, need to notify the public and prepare staff memorandum and et cetera, as well as inform the petitioner. So unless there's any changes to that, that's the report.
Thank you, Chris. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items number one and three through nine. We're going to pull out number two for some modifications, questions.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wait, can I just, I don't want to pull number four, but I was just wondering if you could just kind of explain a little bit what we're hoping to accomplish with number four? Why don't we pull it? That'd be easier, and I'm glad to do it. That'd be fine, then. Okay, I'd like to pull number four then also.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items number one, three, and five through nine.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Roll call. Nancy's here.
Kozler?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Okay.
Item two needs to be tabled.
Yeah. I will entertain a motion to table item number two from the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Point of order. Until what time, Mr. Mayor?
Till the next board meeting.
Thank you. May 3.
Thank you, trustee Chapman. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution R16-04-01 authorizing agreement with Foley &amp; Lautner Incorporated for Bond Counsel and Bernadette Security Services for underwriting relating to special service area number one and number two, special tax refunding bond series 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Chris?
Just briefly, I can make a couple comments, and then we'll respond to questions, myself and finance consultant, Michael Ducharme. As a matter of good business practice, the village continues to review its debt portfolio on a routine basis to determine at which times it may make sense to refinance certain debts of the village that have been in place for some time. As a part of that business practice, Director Ducharme and Finance Manager Ventrella reviewed two sets of special service area bonds, SSA I, which is for the Cambria subdivision, which are 10 or so years old, as well as SSA II, Foxford Hills subdivision. Just by way of information, currently, there's outstanding special service balances paid on taxes for improvements when these subdivisions were built. There are still 216 townhomes in Cambria and 193 single-family homes that have this debt on their tax statement for Cambria. The Foxford Hills subdivision, SSA II, there's outstanding special services taxes on 350 single-family homes. There are some other homes in the two subdivisions that have already paid off the debt. Michael can talk about the total capital value of the overall debt issuances. The short version of this is that by acquiring these services and proceeding with the refinancing of these bonds, we believe we can save an aggregate the residence of these two subdivisions, a total of $1.5 million over the life of the debt. Michael can share some details about the current amount of the bonds that are left, et cetera, but that's why we're here tonight, to start the process right now. Michael, did you have other things to add?
As you recall, back in March, I think it was, the village authorized us to go out and hire or contract with financial advisor, to basically go out and verify that there were substantial savings in these special service area bond issues to warrant a refinancing. The reason the refinancing opportunity is available is the bonds became callable effective March, I think it was 15th of this year. There are approximately, in one of the series, there's a little over $9 million of bonds outstanding. The other ones, approximately $7 million. We went out from a financial advisor with a contract to get bids from various underwriters to give us an idea of the savings that would be out there. There were three bids we received from three underwriters. Based on that, the savings that they identified, comparing a new debt service schedule to the existing debt service schedule using the same maturity date, the savings were a little over $1 million on one of the issues and approximately $700,000 on the other. Those are nominal savings. Present value savings are slightly less than that. At this point in time, what we're asking for this evening is the ability to go out and actually hire bond counsel, hire a specific underwriter to move forward with the sale of the bonds. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that are there, but I think it is a great opportunity for the people who live within the special service areas to be able to reduce those costs for the remaining term for the bonds.
Thank you, Michael, for giving us that information. That's the only reason I wanted to put it out there, is to let people know this is what we're hoping to accomplish. It's something good for the neighborhoods, and hopefully we can see some savings for those residents.
The one thing I just want to add, based on the numbers that we're talking about this evening, in order to get an idea of what those savings were, we went out and asked for those bids for the various underwriters. The actual bond sale won't take place until sometime in May. At least that's what's planned now. As you know, next board meeting, we'll be coming to you or back to you with a bond ordinance to basically authorize that issuance, and once that's done, the actual bond sale date will be set. At that point in time, when the actual bond sale occurs, we'll have the final numbers and know what the actual savings are.
And those savings go because it's a special service area to the residents. This is not to the municipality.
And, Michael, that's not adding additional years to those. Those bonds are out there, and I just wanted to say that.
Not at all.
Thanks.
Using the same maturity date. To give you some idea, too, one last point I'll make. The various interest rates on the existing bonds, for the remaining years, the interest rates on those bonds went from 4.4% all the way to 5%. Based on the bids we have for the refinancing, they'll go from 1% to 3.5%.
Very nice. And also, we've also tried to speed up the process in terms of the timeline and paying off those debts, aren't we?
Yes.
We've moved it up to 2019 as opposed to it was going to be 2024 or something.
That's a different.
That's a different bond issue than what we're talking about.
Okay.
The maturity dates for these bonds will be the exact same as what's currently there.
Okay.
Michael, do you have a feel for what the impact to a homeowner would be, an average homeowner?
I do not, and I'd hate to make that statement until I saw what the final numbers are. I think the way it was set up in the past, it was pretty much an even payment per lot. Of course, residents do have the option to prepay it if they so choose, but that's completely up to them. Special service area bonds, they carry the name of the Village of Cary. The Village of Cary, per se, is not responsible for the debt that's out there. People who are responsible for the debt are the people who own the properties who have been paying the special service area payments to date.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
She has a question over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I saw on there that you was...
Could you come up to the microphone and just state your name, please, for the record?
Jenny Palumbo, 1387 New Haven. You had one in there where you would do it two separate, like they are now, or together? If they're together, we don't, we're not going to be responsible for a... Okay, I just wanted to...
Let me address it a little. I guess recently, there was an opportunity with special service area bonds to, for people to be able to combine issues and only have one issue as opposed to what we currently have today as number one and number two. The actual low bid that I had, based on the numbers that we received before, was from a company, I think it was Bernardi Securities. They would like to have two issues, or that's what they expressed. They want the opportunity to continue to consider it going forward, but for right now, we are still looking at it as two issues. You would have no other obligations than what you have today.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the Village of Cary annual operating and capital budget for...
Don't we want to approve that?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I forgot we did that. Roll call, please, Nancy.
Kraus?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Kozler?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Getting ahead of the game here. It's been a long night. I will entertain a motion to approve the Village of Cary annual operating and capital budget for fiscal year May 1, 2016 to April 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Village Board. For the benefit of the public and the audience, on March 12, after about three to four months of preparation, the village staff met with the Village Board at a workshop session on that Saturday to review, with the course of a number of hours, budgetary submittals for our next fiscal year budget. The village's fiscal year budget runs from May 1 through April 30 of every year. The Board is now approving a balanced general fund budget, our general fund of the village, which subsidizes a lot of the nuts and bolts operations that we do, police, street operations, snow plowing, financial services, those sorts of things. It's all in about $8.3 million budgeted, budget on expenses balanced about $8.3 million in revenues. That is part of this proposal tonight. Overall, we have, as a local government body, a series of about 10 or 11 funds that we're required to use for different revenue sources. We have in total, in this budgetary request, about $18.5 million in total spends through the various funds of the village, which include substantial water and sewer operations. The Board has carefully deliberated on the expenses and revenue projections that have been brought forward by staff. We're glad to balance the budget. We did make a number of edits that are in the staff memorandum from feedback that we received from you, predominantly on the capital improvement program-type budgets and expenses. Those have been noted in the memorandum. Happy to answer any questions about what was brought forward at the meeting. I believe we accommodated every request that was reasonably asked for, and we've allocated our funds in a wise way, in line with our own financial policies, procedures, government accounting standard practices, as well as some of the new components of best practices at a federal level, as well as direction from our state. So we're happy to answer at staff level any questions about the budget tonight.
Thank you very much. You worked very hard on this. Worked well with the Board. We had a great budget workshop, got a lot of issues resolved, and we're moving forward.
And thanks go to the finance department and the department heads who helped put the operating budgets together for each department, following your guidance.
Any other comments?
Yep, I have one, and that is the Residence of Cary...
Yep, I have one, and that is, the residents of Kerry, you have an opportunity to come to this budget meeting every year. You have the opportunity to tell us what we should be focusing on in this village, where we should be spending our dollars, and it's a very heavy responsibility. And for you to leave it up to us, to this board here, while we absolutely would shoulder it, I encourage you, I ask you to, please come. This year was a four-hour meeting, and come and talk about the things that we should be doing with your money. And so if you had the chance, or you get a chance to come out to these meetings, please do.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hosler?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Dudak?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Graus?
Yes.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the First Amendment to the annexation agreement for the Cambria subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Hello, Brian.
This is Brian Simmons, our community development director.
Thank you for the introduction. As the board may recall, the request before you this evening was brought up for discussion back in October of last year. The request is, was continued for some feedback from the community, to get feedback from the community as far as what the feedback, or the opinion of the community would be for the removal of the pergolas. The original annexation agreement for the site included certain exhibits as far as the development of the property. This is the overall landscape plan, and also the courtyard landscape plan for the townhouse portion of the development. Inside the plan incorporated certain landscape features that were to be utilized for the courtyard areas, which include various landscaping, benches, patio areas, and then also gazebos that would lead to the public walkway along New Haven Drive. The proposal is to remove 28 pergolas that are located throughout the development, in between the individual buildings for the townhouse units that front on the New Haven Drive. These images show a few examples of pergolas that are located throughout the site, and then where they would be located compared to the courtyards between the individual As I previously mentioned, back in October, the item was brought up for discussion at this, before the village board. It was reviewed, and there was not strong objection from the board members on the proposed removal. However, the board did ask that the petitioner go back and poll or survey the residents of the community to garner their support as far as what the opinion of the potential impact of removing the pergolas would be on the aesthetics of the development. Since that time period, the petitioner has gone back and performed a survey of its residents. They surveyed over 239 homes in the subdivision, received, at the time of the staff report, about 70 responses, which is 30% of those homes. 83% of the surveyors received back, supported the removal of the pergolas. Nine asked for the replacement of them, and three provided no opinion on the matter. So with that information, the petitioner came back to staff to request an amendment to, the annexation agreement as originally proposed, to remove those 28 pergolas. This evening is to hold the public hearing to review the petitioner's request and allow for public comment. Based off the request and previously discussion, previous discussion on the matter, staff concurs with the petitioner's request, and is therefore recommending that the village board approve the proposed amendments to landscape plans associated with the annexation agreement to the Cambria subdivision by allowing for the permanent removal of the 28 pergolas currently shown on the plans. Staff will be happy to answer any questions you may have in the matter, and petitioners here, as well as any public who want to provide comment.
Brian, can you go back to the question sheet, the poll slide?
Sure.
Somebody want to tell me what the questions exactly were asked, how it was worded?
That's the whole survey. That's the responses.
Do you want them gone? Do you want them to stay? Do you not care? That's what I'm seeing there, is three answers, so...
Majority of the people want them gone.
I was wondering, how was the survey distributed and then collected by the residents?
Again, let the petitioner provide more feedback on that, as far as what their process was.
Sure. I mean, that 83% might be a little misleading, you know, 58 of the 70 is 83%, I believe, but 58 of the 239 is closer to 24%.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, it's based off the responses that were received, it was 58%.
That's what I was wondering, how was that survey conducted, you know, what opportunities were given for the residents?
The petitioner can respond to that.
Okay.
Mrs. Davenport?
Swear anyone else in this public hearing? If anyone else wants to participate in your testimony, they should all swear.
I'm Rita Davenport, I'm the president, the current president of the homeowners.
Anyone who wants to participate in the remainder of the hearing and present testimony on this issue, can you please stand up? Since this is a public hearing, we're going to have you get sworn in, because you're going to be giving testimony. This is a little bit more in-depth than a regular meeting. Petitioner here, too?
The president of the homeowners.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Rita Davenport, I'm the current president of the Cambria Homeowners Association. You had a question, you asked how these surveys, we sent our, we have LMS as our, is our management company, and they, I believe there's a lot of that we wrote and I wrote, and they manage over 200 condominiums in this whole Chicago area. And this, the basic survey that was sent out was prepared by Mr. McCombe and Ms. Bennett, and that was back in October, and it was mailed to the residents. I believe you have a copy of it, I'm looking for a copy of it. It was a copy of it, and was, and it explained what the, what the choices were, and I can't find the copy. Take a look at it. There you go. Okay. Do you, I think you probably all have this in your, this was in the package. And it, and we sent it out, but my mail saw the residents, and we asked that, different questions. We asked what the removal, we also explained the cost of the removals and the cost of replacement, and the cost of removals is probably about, in between $60,000 and $90,000. If you want to replace them and put, depends on how you want to replace them, we could put new wood ones, but what originally was done is the posts were put in, right into the ground, no concrete things, just wood was right into the ground. So that's what is rotting, and there are some that are actually leaning. So it's quite, you know, it's, and there's a lot, there's a quite, there's quite a lot. In fact, there's one that's leaning really badly now, and up in the front as you drive in, so, but we do know of several other homeowners associations, the Cambria, the Lenar Homes, that they have already removed these things because of the cost of, the cost of upkeep and everything. Now, we could put, we could put them back in with a, with the materials that will, you know, that won't rot, but it's going to cost about $90,000. Previously, we just incurred a three-year project, which I'm sure you all know about, which was about $660,000. We did repairs to all the townhomes, we had everything done. So that took quite a bite out of our budgets, and at this point, we're trying to maintain our fiduciary responsibilities and try to save what we can. This, not that we, I don't, I like the pergolas, they're really nice, but I don't really think it makes a difference if they're there or not. We have several other ideas we'd probably like to present later, we'd like to have, put something else up in that place, maybe a singular post with a, with a, with a solar lamp on top that would, that would give the addresses, but that's something in the future. But at this point, we really don't see any, any, you know, any idea why, why we should keep them, and we really do need to watch our budgets and keep everything in line, and we do, we will have, we will have roof replacements in about three to four years, and that's another expense that we're going to have to, we don't want to raise anymore, we don't want to raise our, you know, the cost of our, to the residents, but we'd like, you know, like I said, we want to, we want to build up our reserves, and this is one way we can try to save a little bit of money and do something like that. Are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to say, thanks for stating in your presentation there that LMS has gone through in other, of their properties, and taken them down and recommended that. And as a matter of fact, it's a preference that they've gone across all of their properties that have these external designs to have them removed. So I just wanted to say thank you for making us aware of that. I personally am in favor of them. I love the pergolas, it separates that property's out from anything else in Kerry, and frankly, a lot out. It really gives a unique shine. I like the idea of, and shame on us for not, you know, realizing that if you put wood in the ground, you know, it'll, it'll rot. I do appreciate the fact that you've had some, some challenges and some expenses, and I'm in Santa Point, and we're just going through the same thing, but I really like them there, and I'm going to be with those nine residents that say, replace them. I love them, and thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Has there been any kind of maintenance done up to this point?
Oh, yes, we painted them, and we've, we've done maintenance on quite a few of them over the years, yes. These are about 13 years old. But unfortunately, Lenar did some things that were really, I mean, why you would ever put a piece of wood in the ground, it expects to last for 30 years, I don't really know, but that was the preference, and just similar to some of the things that, some of the defects that we found in our houses, so they, I'm not sure why, but there were quite a few things that had, we had problems with, so...
I would echo the same thing that Trustee Chapman said, though. I think it gives it the definition, it gives it a, an identity that people realize, okay, you're talking about Cambria, okay, the first thing I think of are the pergolas and the look of the community. I think if you take those down, it kind of just, you become one more condominium development in Kerry.
Well, the problem is, too, is then we have, we have to pass it on to the residents, and right, and our, and our fees right now are not, are somewhat exorbitant, and I feel we had to go up because of the fact that we had this, we had this $600,000, and the occurrence of the, because of Lenar, we had to spend $660,000. And I really can't see spending another $70,000 to $90,000 to replace these and having to have the residents incur, you know, incur this cost again.
Well, I sympathize with you, but if you're saying that it's reasons that Lenar incurred because of shoddy construction, and that, then perhaps, you know, we should go back to them and look at it.
We tried that already, don't worry. We, and the other, and also the other, Kerry Woods has also tried, because they've had the same problems. They tried to sue Lenar also, that didn't work. So, but we can go back, we had, we had many things wrong, but the problem is, is that we just don't want to raise our, you know, raise the cost to our, you know, our homeowners, and we don't want to have to, them to incur this. It's not that I don't like them either, it's not a problem that I don't like them. It's, we really, you know, it's just another expense that we have to put out there for them, and nowadays, things are pretty tight in a lot of cases, and we do, we see that in our, in our residents and, and paying of the fees and everything, it's not, it's not easy a lot of times.
I may be able to offer some unique perspective on this, because I'm, think I'm the only one on this board that has lived in Cambria. Those pergolas are in the sort of central entryway that really is seldom ever used. Would that be a correct statement?
Absolutely correct. We rarely use our front door, unfortunately, most of the people use the drive for entry. You're correct.
My concern is with you having to raise your homeowners association dues, and the fact that's going to have on your property values for people that see a very large homeowners association monthly payment. So I guess my question to you would be, how much would this raise the money?
I really have not thought about that cost, but like I said, we just recently did it, we had to raise them because of the fact of that, that large occurrence of the, over the three-year period of the $660,000. But it's, for the people that are moving in, what you want to see is a nice reserve and fees that are not exorbitant, and that's, that would be a plus. And we have, we have a property with so many trees and things, that basically, when, in the spring, when the trees come out and everything, you barely see the pergolas. It's not, you know, so...
Yeah, and from living there, I agree with that. I mean, you hardly notice them once you live there, and they look nice, but the maintenance upkeep is insane. And I side with you that, I sympathize, like I said, living there, and even the trees that are in the, whatever you call it, by the driveways that grew up between the decks.
We're debating on that, there are some people that have told us that basically, what's basically happening with the trees, we're, we're holding on that because of the fact that we've determined that some of the downspouts are running into those areas where the trees are, and we think that that's causing some of the concrete problems, and we're trying to fix that by having the downspouts that will make sure that they run off into the driveways, not into these areas where the concrete is, so we're, that's in a whole position right now, the trees and the driveways at this point.
Well, it's my opinion that the value added by removing them and decreasing fees would make your values, home values appreciate more than keeping them and, and charging more home, larger homeowners association dues, so I'm in favor of removing them.
I'm going to echo some of that also, and I think what I want to say is, first of all, I appreciate you going out and doing that survey. And while we may look at it, and some people may say, gosh, you don't have a huge response, 30% response is not really that bad when you send out a survey to get some things back.
It's difficult, people don't, we don't, you know, the, it's just like you have a meetings, we have a meeting every month now, and we get, we do not, we've tried, we've actually tried some new things, we have a, we have a Facebook page now, and we've gotten a lot of responses from there. We have, we have 60 people that are on there now, so, and it's, and it's really working out well, and we can put our meetings and put it, all the information out to them on that. It is, it's become really good, we're, we're trying some new things.
Right. Well, and again, I appreciate that you went out and reached out to them, and of the people that responded, when I see 83% saying that, remove them, I'm in agreement that you want to be fiscally responsible to your homeowners, and, you know, again, when people are looking at houses, one of the things they're going to look at is, what are those HOA fees?
Yep.
The higher those go, the lower your opportunity for your house to appreciate in value. So I definitely, while I can appreciate that aesthetically, it's a nice feature, I can also appreciate where you're coming from, that you did a lot of research, you reached out, and based on the responses you've gotten, I definitely think that you did your due diligence, and I support you removing those.
Thank you.
Kim?
I support removing them, I think the survey speaks for itself, and I also think the idea of raising homeowners association fees is a no-no, so you don't have to.
Rick?
I would agree, and if you figure out a way to get people to come to your meetings, will you let us know?
Yeah, please.
Well, like I said, we started the Facebook page, that seems to have helped a lot, and we're trying to, you know, we're trying to reach out to people. It's, you get such a variety of people, as you know, in a large association like that, it's, you know, difficult sometimes.
But adding $7 a month to your homeowner's fees by, you know, replacing these pergolas, that's not going to be very much.
Well, we just raised them up about, about eight or nine percent, yeah, 15%, so due to the $660,000.
Are these homeowners in the special service area we talked about earlier?
Yes, they are.
Hey, we're giving them some money back.
Well, if you remember correctly, too, they just bared the brunt of major renovations with some construction issues that you've had, that we've dealt with at the board level as well, so you've paid your dues, so to speak.
Yeah, the roofs will be next.
But seriously, thank you for addressing everything that we asked, you know, and everybody welcome here, thank you.
Thank you, great survey, by the way.
Thank you.
Roll call, does anybody else want to talk about the...
No, if there was any questions, I did want to say that...
Can you identify it yourself for the hearing again?
Jenny Palumbo, Vice President of Cambria. Our association fees, just so you guys know, right now for the clarages, which are the bigger units, they're over $200, right now. The Hamberry's are $189. So adding $7 besides all the other things that you're going to have to add, I mean, it adds up real fast, as you know, you just did your budget.
Yeah.
You know, we have lawn care, and we have snow removals, so I mean, all that's expenses, every single year, they are going up.
Sure.
So we're looking at maybe $240 with that $7. I mean, we are going to make it where it's not going to be affordable to move into Cambria.
Well, save us some pictures. Save us some pictures before you tear them down, because when I first came over there, that was what really... that was what really, you know, stuck out and that's all.
I do just have one question for you. How are the structural changes that you had to make, given the problems you had? Are all those taken care of now? They're all, they worked out okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Any ready? It's, I'll entertain, roll call, please.
Chapman?
No.
Can we clarify what it is? We're voting.
We're disclosing the public hearing.
We did that with the voice. Now we're going back to the original motion, which I'm calling the roll call.
So a vote yes on the motion is a vote that they can remove the pergolas?
Correct. And the affirmative yes.
Okay. So I'll start again.
Power to the pergolas. Nope.
Chapman?
No.
No.
No. Kraus?
No.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Dudak?
Yes.
Kozler?
Yes.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Thank you. No more pergolas.
I'm a stick in the mud.
You need to?
Yes.
You need to vote.
Go ahead.
Yes.
You need five votes to amend anything?
Oh, to amend, it's okay. Okay, thank you. Did you have something else to say?
Next one.
Oh, I was going to take a five-minute recess so that the people from Cambria could. You want to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah. Hang around.
Run. Run.
We're giving you an opportunity. There's an elevator over there and stairs over here. The high-energy coffee. Me neither. Bring me something. I hear there's a Burger King coming today.
Starbucks.
You don't go start here.
It's coming.
Cut it out. The trees are dead. They feed the termites. Airates the grass.
She likes it different. But with me, I do. What she likes. She's my own pet, so I'm my own fix.
Thank you.
Being as Irish as they get, I got no one to lead them.
That's right.
Lucky you.
I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 016-04-02 granting an amendment to the zoning ordinance and the conditional use for senior housing for the property located on the southwest corner of Three Oaks Road and Feinberg Drive.
So moved.
Second.
I object to the consideration of the motion.
What? You object to the consideration of the motion?
This is the issue of voting.
Oh, about the TESSC text amendment?
No.
Oh.
I believe that, you know, you can ask Trustee Coss.
Yeah, is this about voting tonight on this? This is, although it's stating that we're looking for action on the board, this is for discussion purposes at the board level. This is, will be on the next village board meeting for an actual action item. So what we're doing is giving the opportunity for the board to have interaction again with the petitioner. And Trustee Coss, could you explain what your objection is?
Well, no. So why didn't it say that we're having discussion instead of consider for approval?
I had mentioned that this afternoon, too, and they said that we can make an amendment here on the dais.
Okay, I'm fine with that. If this is discussion.
Ask the motion to be amended to?
Yeah.
The petitioner is already aware of the fact that this is on the 19th. I told him some time ago, so. This is just giving the board the option to have full discussion and reflection tonight without needing the pressure to call the vote. In theory, you could amend that, but I presume that the past practice with first reading was going to be helpful in this case and that's why I suggested it.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that and I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay. Do I need to make any formal? He's withdrawn his motion.
There was a motion before that. Chapman.
Chapman and McAlpine.
So that motion is to approve.
That's to approve.
He withdraws.
Do you withdraw your second? Trustee McAlpine, do you withdraw your second?
Oh, yes, I withdraw.
All right.
I'm a team player.
Sorry about the confusion, folks. There was a little last minute verbiage change here. So we're all set. We're all set? Good.
Could somebody explain to me?
Yeah, he doesn't understand. So there was, there was a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance. And in order to make sure that there's no pressure to actually vote on the motion that's on the floor, the motion to approve was withdrawn. So we're now just opening the item for discussion purposes only.
And that was my understanding from the beginning, when we first started talking about this, that tonight would just be a discussion issue. And when I saw that we were voting, I was caught off guard by that also.
We were just. We discussed it this afternoon. We were going to make an amendment here at the dais. Before, Jim.
But I think we need to vote on the amendment, right?
No, we could just have a discussion on this.
No, no. The motion to approve was withdrawn.
Okay.
So that is now no longer.
But I mean, as far as OMA, are we okay on that?
Yeah. You can just discuss it without taking any action.
Okay. So we'll be having a discussion today. Brian Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Ford. The request before you this evening for discussion is a request for the development of the property at the corner of Three Oaks Road and Feinberg Drive. It's proposal for a text amendment and conditional use for a senior housing development on that property. Just to give a little history on this project, the original petition for the development was reviewed by the Zoning Board of Appeals back in December of last year. The original petition included modifications in a text amendment, conditional use, three variations, and a comp plan amendment for the subject property. Zoning Board made a few recommendations during that hearing that were reviewed by the village board in January of this year. Petitioner proposed some modifications to the project at that time and the village board referred the project back to ZPA. The modifications to the plan, since it was referred back to the ZPA, required the re-notification public hearing for that project, for the project. Subsequently, the petitioner amended their petitions further to change the code amendments that were proposed and then is seeking, was seeking disapproval of a text amendment for more areas of the zoning ordinance and then a conditional use related to the project. Those two requests were reviewed by the ZPA in March 10th of this year and the board made a recommendation at that time to this body. This evening, what's proposed to be reviewed or discussed is a ZPA recommendation on the current petitions as currently drafted or requested. The first petition that is seeking approval for the project is a text amendment that amends certain sections of the village zoning ordinance related to senior housing developments. As proposed, there are six areas of the code that would be modified under the zoning text amendment. They're highlighted in the slide, but include the table of permitted uses, which is shown on the lower portion of the slide, the definition area of the zoning ordinance, the table of parking standards, and then supplemental standards areas would include modifications to the density requirements for projects, ground floor unit requirements, and then finally, the table of supplemental standards. I'll go through in more detail what the proposed modifications are on the upcoming slides, but that's an overview of what is being requested. As far as the table of permitted uses, petitioner is proposing to add a new land use category for senior housing under the multifamily dwellings, existing land use and residential uses, a portion of that table. The proposal is to add the new land use category as a conditional use in the R3, B1, B3R, B4, and BP districts. Currently, the R3, B1, B3R districts allow for multifamily housing under conditional use approvals. The B4 district allows other institutional uses as far as assisted living. The Three Oaks assisted living facility is in that zoning district and the BP district would be the proposed location for this project.
Brian?
Yes.
What was the, what was the zoning where Pedcor was built?
It was R3. Originally, it was zone manufacturing and then it was rezoned as part of the project to R3.
So prior to the rezoning to R3, was it any of the?
Rick, could you pull your mic closer, please?
Sorry. Prior to the rezoning to R3, was the Pedcor property, any of the zoning categories you have listed here?
What?
I guess what I'm asking is, did Pedcor have to go through the same thing? That's what I'm asking.
They did not have a text amendment as part of their project. Their requests had a map amendment that rezoned the property from manufacturing to the R3 district.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
Brian, you mentioned that the petitioner requested that this be added to our zoning ordinances. Why would the petitioner be telling us what we should be adding to our zoning ordinances? Why didn't we come up on this on our own? Or why couldn't he have come before us under the previous ordinances that we had and gone forward with the project or not gone forward with the project? Why are we changing all the zoning at his request, it sounds like?
The zoning ordinance allows for this type of modifications for it. So it's any developer or property owner that's in the village could request a modification to the zoning ordinance. Approximately 20% of the zoning cases that we've had since we've adopted the zoning code have been for text amendments. Majority of the time, they are proposed by the village or village as the petitioner. But there have been instances where developers do propose modifications of the code in order to develop certain properties. Oxford Hills, Three Oaks Assisted Living Facility are both examples of projects that were approved with text amendments to modify the code so they can get zoning approvals for it.
So how does this change, then, what would have happened under the previous zoning ordinances that we had as opposed to now what we have in place in terms of the current project? I mean, what is the difference then?
I can get.
You know, why did we have to change it?
From a standpoint of looking at our zoning ordinance, it didn't have regulations speaking towards senior housing specifically would be as a multifamily housing development. So the standards as far as requirements would be different from a, the intensity of what parking would be required for the development. As an example, for multifamily development apartment complex, our code would require 2.25 spaces per, parking space per unit. And the proposal is for, provide a code provision of one.
So previously, though, he went through the process and he was denied that, you know, so, but now we're seeing these changes here to the ordinances and it seems like it's opening the door up, you know, making it a lot easier to get something pushed through.
So I guess I'm going to step in and try and clarify the text amendment and all the other stuff. And also clarify that the application that came before you in January was not denied. There was no final action taken because it was referred back to the ZPA for further consideration. Text amendments are specifically contemplated by state law and by the village code in recognition of the fact that the zoning code is inherently incomplete because we can't be omniscient. We can't predict all potential uses and idiosyncrasies of applications that come before the village over the course of time. The market changes, housing products change, business types change, modes of transportation change. And so when a new category of use that has unique zoning characteristics and externalities on neighboring uses arise, that doesn't deserve to be classified and regulated similarly to other things that already exist, text amendments are designed to create new rules that are more well-defined for that particular category of use. And so Director Simmons gave you some examples of other developments that arose that were unique enough to warrant writing new rules to recognize that the characteristics of those projects were not similar enough to existing uses described in your code so that they, it was trying to fit a square hole, you know, a square peg to a round hole. And that doesn't mean that, you know, because you're writing a text amendment, doesn't mean that it's a bad project or a good project. It just recognizes in terms of writing rules of general applicability, you know, the text amendment is going to apply throughout the village. It doesn't apply only to Pearl. It'll apply to all the properties in R3, B1, B3, R, B4, and BP. By adopting a text amendment, the village would be recognizing that this category of use is unique enough and distinct from other types of multifamily dwellings to warrant its own set of regulations.
But I think what Trustee Kraus is getting at is they had the ability to request variances without a text amendment. And that's what happened. Then it went to ZPA and received a negative recommendation. And since there weren't votes at this level, it was returned to ZPA. And now it seems like we're changing the rules to allow a project that was given a negative recommendation to go through. Right, Jeff?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
And I have a question. So with the senior housing, I notice it's the only housing in here that fits into the Business Park District. Like, how do you come up with those requirements that put it in those categories? Because all these other categories don't fit in there, but the senior housing does. So I'm trying to understand that.
Sure. So the petitioner's proposal is for the zoning district of the property. They're seeking to amend the code to allow that use to be permissible use under certain conditions in the BP district. So any property that would be zoned BP would be a type of development such as this would be considered as an option, but would require the zoning approvals in order to develop that site.
So if I'm a multifamily housing developer, am I going to need a variance from the zoning board if I want to build in a Business Park area or a text amendment?
For anything other than senior housing.
Anything other than senior housing.
Senior housing would still require conditional use approval by this board, would have to go through a zoning, a hearing for a ZPA for review and then come before this board for approval of the project. Any other type of project that is not senior housing would not be permitted. They would have to seek a text amendment to allow that use to go into the district.
So to Adam's point, if our codes were all up to date, given that senior housing or affordable housing or whatever you want to call it is a newer product, would you have expected we would have added those already to our codes? And the fact that right now, we don't have it covered anywhere because it's a newer property type, is that sort of?
You know, absent going through the process you're about to embark on next year in doing a comprehensive unified development ordinance, it's more commonplace for communities to be reactive to applications as the economy changes and the market shows new demands for uses. It's not as common for communities to annually predict what new types of housing units are going to come before them. And so I don't want to say that your code is not up to date because you haven't gone through the comprehensive revisions that you're planning on doing next year. I don't find it at all unusual at this point in time, in light of the extraordinary market for senior housing across the collar counties, for the village to consider a unique set of rules specifically for an area that's showing growth and demand that you're likely to see more applications for in the future.
One final question. And this is not to debate whether it's the right spot or wrong spot, but there's been comments made, why don't we put it in a different place within the community? Same things were even made about Pedcor. So if we went out to the far west side out by Sage Products, would we still have to go through this if this was built in any of those areas?
I don't know what the zoning district there is.
Specifically, the vacant land that is next to Sage across, I forget the name of the street.
Sage Parkway.
Sorry, I used to live in Cambria myself. It's that vacant parcel that's right across from Sage is zone B2. So that property would not be, would require rezoning if another project were to go forward there. Other properties that are zoned BP within the project were to go forward there. Other properties that are zoned BP within the village would include the parcel next to the Goddard daycare and the village-owned parcel across from that between the daycare and the Timbertown Park area. The other properties in the village that are also zoned BP would include this site proposed here, the village hall property, Park District, and then the vacant lot that is between the Park District facility and Wolf Street. And then a portion of the, I believe, the Shally property is zoned BP as well.
So let me, maybe I, you get such a great explanation, I lost maybe exactly what I was looking for.
Sure.
If they were to build out by Goddard School or by Sage Products, would they have to ask for the same thing?
If this text amendment was approved, they would not have to seek a text amendment next to the Goddard School. They would just require zoning approvals for conditional use for development project.
If the text amendment that is being requested here was being acted on and it was approved, then they would not, correct?
They would not need another text amendment request. They would need a zoning application for conditional use. So they would still have to submit that zoning petition, go through a public hearing process, and come before this board for approval for a project. The proposed text amendment would not, as in each zoning district that they're proposing the use to be appropriate for, it would not be a permitted use by right. So every development that would come forward that would be restricted for senior housing would require conditional use approval by the village board.
So it sounds like there's not very many places you could build this in Cary regardless at the present time?
Present, yeah, without redeveloping an existing site that has been developed. The vacant parcels that are left that are zoned in these districts, the B3R district is basically the district from First Street towards Main Street, that front on 14. B4 is a smaller commercial district that are specifically where the daycare medical office built and are located in the Cary-Ogonquin Main Street intersection. There's two properties there. There's zone B4. There's a property at the base of Cary-Ogonquin Road by the entrance to Trout Valley that is also zoned B4. And all the, you know, vacant property in the village that is zoned R3 has, you know, been developed or has zoning entitlements for it for development.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
So the bottom line is that there's really no change. Anybody who came before the board before with a petition could apply for a variance, and there really is no reason to change our zoning code because they could apply for variances that would allow them to build, correct?
It would, the proposed text amendments would modify the code so that it would be more geared towards or speak more towards this type of development. From a standpoint of a multifamily development were to come in, that was rental senior housing, as an example, under this current code, it's not designed or drafted in a way to speak towards that type of development. So the number of variances of relief that would be necessary for that project or a project of that type or of this type, you know, the amount of relief that would be required by the board would be substantial from a standpoint that, you know, parking standards would need to be modified, potentially setbacks, you know, zoning districts to allow that type of use. It depends on what the proposal is.
Without implying any bias one way or the other, the reason that this is, the reason this type of use is an applicant for a text amendment versus variances is because the programming needs of, the programming needs and the externalities on surrounding properties resulting from a senior-oriented housing development are so fundamentally different than a traditional multifamily dwelling, a traditional apartment building, that it warrants recognition under separate regulations in the zoning code.
Then why didn't they apply for the text amendments in the first place?
They did seek approvals for text amendments.
Not initially?
Yes, they did. There was the original petition.
But not for all these items?
Correct.
There were, what, seven variances?
No, I forgot. There was three variances. The original proposal included a text amendment to modify the zoning ordinance. And since the time period that it was sent back to the zoning board for review, they modified the petition to modify the code and others that eliminated the need for a couple of those variances. One of the variances that was recommended for approval by the ZPA originally was for a building setback. The petitioner revised the plan so that that setback was no longer required. The text amendment wasn't, you know, modifications of text amendment aren't related to that variation. The other variation or amendments that are proposed speak towards the density language that we have within the zoning ordinance that eliminated the need for two variances. One variance was the number of ground units, ground floor units. The existing code has a provision that no more than six dwelling units could be on, located on the ground floor in any building. The current petition is seeking to amend that section to provide an exclusion as far as, you know, any senior housing or assisted living facility or other institutional uses when they're approved as part of conditional use. So the village board can still grant certain conditions on a project when they approve it, which would include the number of units on the ground floor and also the density or the two modifications that are in the revised petition that would not require those two variations to be necessary. And those approvals are similar to the assisted living, or, yeah, the assisted living facility on Silver Lake and Three Oaks when that was approved. That had a text amendment to change the code for that use to go into the B4 zoning district. And then also in that approval, the board approved the project with a condition as far as the number of units that that development could have. So this proposed text amendment is in line with previous approvals that the village has granted development rights for other properties that would be similar in this case.
Well, I don't know how similar they are comparing a nursing home to apartments, but, you know, it is surprising that the variances that were denied now we're going after text amendments. I don't understand that, so.
That's what I have a problem with, too.
I can give additional information as far as, I mean, the rest of, I had other information here as well. I mean, other modifications proposed are to still include the definition for senior housing within the zoning ordinance to restrict it for multifamily housing in which dwelling units are designed and operated exclusively for persons age 55 years and older. That was previously proposed, as are the table of parking standards to provide a parking requirement for senior housing of one space per dwelling unit was similar to the previous proposal as well. As I just mentioned, the proposed amendments to the density requirements and supplemental standards would, and also the ground floor units, would allow the board to approve a project, you know, with this unit count that would exceed the existing density requirements that are shown on this table for the individual zoning districts for a specific project. So if a project were to come forward with a certain density, the board would be able to approve it with a certain number of units or ground floor units. Basically, looking at the ground floor unit requirement was developed during a time period when the village was seeing a lot of townhouse development in the community. Cambria is an example of one, again, that was developed throughout the time period that the ordinance was approved, that limits how large those buildings could be on the ground, on the ground level. Finally, the other table of a code that requires an amendment is the table of supplemental standards. And the three tables that are proposed for amendments, the way that our ordinance is drafted is if you amend one of those tables, you're required to amend the other two. So by adding the senior housing land use, it requires amending those three tables. So you add the definition of what senior housing is, you add the parking requirement for senior housing, and then you have to place it in the zoning district and then the supplemental standards board. So by amending one, it requires amendment to the other two. And the proposed, at this time period would, for the district lottery and lot with, refer back to the density language in the, on the previous slide here as far as what the density of a project could have. And then also the distance from residential would be consistent with other separation standards that we would have for similar type of developments or other type of multifamily developments in the community. The zoning ordinance provides certain standards that need to be met as far as approving or considering text amendments. Those are displayed in this slide as far as a proposed amendment is not detrimental to the orderly development of the village, is not detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the community. And the proposed amendment promotes the public interest and not solely the interest of the applicant. The second petition that the petitioner is seeking approval of is a conditional use for the actual development. Once, if text amendments to the zoning ordinance are approved, then conditional use for the project would be required in order to allow the development to occur within the zoning district following the adoption of the zoning changes. The proposed project is still proposed to be three stories in height. Since the previous petition, they have dropped a few units off the development. It's now 62 total units with 18 on the ground floor. As proposed, the development complies with the bulk requirements, zoning requirements for the property under the existing zoning.
Brian, if I could step in. How many bedrooms total?
Um, I didn't see the breakdown in here.
We'll answer that here in a moment.
Well, you're gonna have the petitioner come up and he can answer those questions directly.
Yep. As far as the total setback requirements and the height for the development, as well as lot coverage of proposed development, complies with the existing zoning requirements for the property. The building height as proposed would be 36 feet 9 inches when the maximum permitted by right in the property is 50 feet currently. Proposed lot coverage under the BP district allows for 70% coverage. The petitioner is proposing to cover 37% of the property with developmental uses. The zoning ordinance also provides standards that are need to be reviewed as part of a petition, which were reviewed by the zoning board. The detail on the slide indicate that the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, general welfare of the community, not substantially diminish or impair the values of property within immediate vicinity, not impede the normal orderly development of surrounding property, and not contribute to or overburdening municipal services. Similarly, the use will be consistent with the policies and future land use maps on the village comprehensive plan. This indicates the site plan as proposed, as mentioned, the proposed project will comply with the required building setbacks. The narrowest point for a setback is 54 feet, which is the code requirement for the site based off the building height, is located near the entrance to the drive-through or drop-off lane for the post office. Due to the nature of the design of the building with the main portion of the facade being set back, majority of the building will actually be set back further from Feinberg Road than that 54-foot setback. The second narrowest point is 61 feet near the bend on Feinberg Drive. But as you can see by this slide, it'll be set back 70 feet further from Feinberg Drive by the entrance, 90 feet to the rear of the Cary Square Shopping Center property, and over around 110 feet to the property line along Three Oaks Road. Proposed building elevations are shown in this rendering, has a mix of various materials, of stone-based brick materials, and also siding with a peaked roof that would maintain the residential character similar to other office buildings that are in the area. That would maintain a peaked roof that would blend with existing development in the, in the region from that standpoint. The comprehensive plan, as previously discussed, the previous village board meeting includes certain language regarding senior housing. The plan states the village should give priority to quality of design and construction rather than looking at potentially the end use. Provided development support the goals of the comprehensive plan. And the housing goal speaks towards encouraging housing options for all stages of life, not just looking for, you know, potential focus on aging in place and developing senior housing options. The plan did not go as far as to identify locations for senior housing, but did, you know, provide consideration for locations that would have pedestrian access to community facilities, including transit, good services, parks, other governmental uses. So based off that review, Steph believed and recommended that this site would be appropriate based off those directions, the comprehensive plan for the proposed use. Similarly, the village last year adopted an affordable housing plan. The proposed project is a Lytec project that would be for affordable housing for seniors, establish a goal in our housing plan of achieving 10% affordable housing within the community. Before, the plan also included provisions to promote future affordable housing projects through the inclusion of senior housing with possible incentives that could be considered for any project, including variations in text amendments, density zoning comp plan amendments, and, you know, fee waivers, reductions, et cetera. And obviously, any incentives that would be present or related to a project would be at the discretion of the village board. Affordability percentages based off projects that the village has already approved, and the proposed unit count for this project would increase our number of affordable units based on Illinois Housing Development Authority's calculation to 8.8%. And then Cary's calculation, if you recall in the plan, had a counter recommendation as far as the number of units that the village felt was in the plant, the community, to 13% based off the proposed units of 62. The zoning board held a public hearing on March 10th to review the petitions. And during documentation that was presented during that hearing and also testimony by petitioner and the public, the ZPA recommended approval of the following motions by vote of 5-00, included approval of the text amendment to chapter 17 of the village zoning code to create regulations for senior housing as presented previously, and also approval of conditional use for senior housing development located on the subject property, subject to the conditions that are included in your staff report. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you may have, but the petitioner is also here to provide additional feedback and testimony regarding their proposal.
Brian, could you go into a little bit about, excuse me, how these housing projects and the reduced taxes that they pay, who picks up the, then, does the rest of the community then get, are we responsible then for the lower taxes that these projects are receiving through their credits and that?
No. From a standpoint of the, the way that the program works is that the developer would get, sells or purchases tax credits that help finance the project, and then the subject property would still pay taxes on the property. That there would be, based up, the current unit count would be roughly $84,000 annually currently of property taxes that would be generated by the site. Of that, I believe about $4,500 would be directly to the village, but other taxing bodies would receive property taxes from the site as it were developed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up about the taxes, because people throw out these numbers, $84,000 a year in taxes. But when you look at what the actual village portion of what the village will be collecting is only $4,309 based on the tax rate that we collect in the village. So, you know, we're putting up a apartment complex, and $4,000 a year doesn't even begin to cover the costs of, you know.
Well, and it should be noted that the petitioner claimed it was $135,000 in taxes that they would pay initially, and I objected to that. And now it comes right around the number that I stated originally. So that's pretty coincidental.
Questions here?
And why do we target 55 as the age limit? I mean, that's right around the corner for me, and I'm nowhere near wanting to retire or to.
Just from a standpoint of other ordinances that I've seen, that's a limit that has Just from a standpoint of other ordinances that I've seen, that's a limit that has been established for, you know, senior housing. Obviously, you, the number of individuals that would be that age living in this facility, it might, you know, establish that baseline for, but you would more than likely, as the petitioner has previously mentioned, have individuals who'd be in their late 60s or 70s that would be living in the facility or later from that standpoint. But it would just establish a baseline for what the village defines as a senior housing goal.
And I just, I see that age limit as just, you know, putting a little lipstick on an apartment complex, and let's call it senior housing, and we'll sell it to the community, because who's against senior housing?
Could we increase that age if we wanted to, to 65?
Could we have the petitioner, if he's here, do you want to come up and answer some of these questions, please?
Prior to that, I just want to point out, could we have the minutes reflected trustee Chapman left at 40?
He will not be returning this evening at work.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. David Berg with Pearl, very excited to be back here talking about this again. I really appreciate the opportunity to come back in this setting where you're not taking action just to talk about the development. I think the development is in a, is in, is in a good place now. I know there were some questions that were just raised, and I'll address those in short order. I thought what I'd do, though, is go through a very quick presentation. I don't want to repeat anything that Mr. Simmons said, so I'll, if I can just kind of skip through this to, to give you an overview. First thing I want to say is, I just want to kind of recognize and thank members of the community who have come out over the last six months to participate in this process one way or the other. I don't know if that's appropriate, but a lot of people have come out of their own volition, and frankly, a lot of people in support, both through writing and through testimony at ZPA and here. And I really appreciate that, especially when you're hearing from village residents who have lived here for 30 years, 50 years, 90 years. It's pretty impressive, the participation in this process, and I think it's made for a better proposal. So let me just take it from the top down, and I'll go as quickly as I can here. One thing that I want to start with is just since Brian brought up the timeline, I do want to go back and just clarify or remind that from the very, very beginning, ZPA did obviously recognize, almost unanimously recognize, the need for a new land use category because it was so distinct and different, as Mr. Simon was pointing out, that there was clearly a need there, a standalone category that needed to be addressed. And that was almost unanimous from the very beginning. They also approved by, basically by supermajority, the conditional use from the very beginning. So, you know, part of the challenge, as you'll recall, that we had was on the density side. And that has been discussed and discussed over again, was reflected in a density table that you have that was written for a different purpose at a different time. So, you know, again, I'm just going to move through this very quickly. But again, just from an overview standpoint, when you look at the site plan now, you know, we have greater setbacks on three of the four sides than we did when we first started this process. We don't have a need for, you know, a front yard variance anymore. The building was slid back further. You know, the, the height of the building was reduced down from 40 to 36.9 feet. The density was reduced, the number of ground floor units was reduced, and I think we are showing a sensitivity, to say the least, to try to work within what ZPA was looking for and what they were concerned with, and some of the concerns we heard from you guys, frankly, dating back to October, last October, when we started with committee of the whole. It's just, it's a better plan, it fits better on that site, you know, and our density per unit is down, and it matches Three Oaks assisted living down the street. Just a reminder, what we came to you with back in October on the top there, you know, you have a slightly different elevation that we continue to work on, on the bottom, different root pitch there. We went from an 8/8 to a 5/8. The materials on the elevation have changed, and we'll continue to, to work on that. This is a view from the rear of the building to show it's, you know, there are slight changes, but it's real in terms of square feet and in terms of density. There was the initial elevation concept with the steeper root pitch. Here's the new, you know, east elevation as it appears today. Again, a work in progress. The old west elevation, what it might look like today, less massing, a little more subtle. We're also looking at ledgestone along the base. That's not something that we've discussed with staff yet or we've gotten feedback on, but, you know, we're trying to continue to work on this to make it more attractive, more appealing and architecturally harmonious, something that the village and the residents that live there will be proud of. We also moved away from any of the vinyl siding. Here, we're showing, you know, fiber cement siding. Again, the details we can get into, and we will get into more over time, as I've said again and again, if, you know, at the point that this development is moving forward, the first thing we would do is come to the village and sit down with staff and really do this in a collaborative way. But we're pretty happy with even where we are today. There's some detail. There's a, you know, ledgestone, it could be a lot of different stone variations, but we're really starting to get a little more granular to make sure that this reflects and looks, looks great. So, that, I think, in a very, very short presentation, you know, we've been responsive, and we've continued to work with ZPA and with staff to be sensitive and responsive and address some of the needs. And that's why, you know, and there were concerns still expressed at the ZPA level last month, but we got unanimous, unanimous approval, which was fantastic on both items. And I think that, that says a lot, given the process that we've gone through, and we feel, we feel really good about it, that your technical body, you know, was able to get to that point after a lot of deliberation. Since that point, we are committed to continuing to enhance the process, the direction of staff. We've started to look at the addition of a satellite senior center, adding that to the building, and I want to show you what that might look like. From this point forward, we're within the setbacks, we're within the density, we're within the lock coverage, none of those things are violated. So we're just showing you what that next step might look like and what we're committed to doing, you know, if this development moves forward. So, and again, we did not get feedback yet from staff, but you'll notice the northeast section of the building, an extended parking lot, an extended, basically, the community space would be on the northeast leg of the building on the first floor, it'd be a separate space. We've added another parking field, walking paths, and given a lot of thought to this. After staff gave us that directive, we basically convened the general contractor, the property manager, the engineer, the architect, also spent time with Ms. Anderson from the Kraus Senior Center to really get an understanding of the demographic and how the senior services are used, how the clubs meet, what the flow is like, you know, percentage of seniors that drive versus drop-offs, and what happens in that space, and how it can be and should be programmed, because we know that the village is interested in, you know, having satellite centers that can continue to serve and address the need. So here's what the first floor plan, how it would be modified in that event. There are still specific spaces within the building for, you know, exercise room and computer room, you know, different areas that are for residents only. But at the end of the hallway, you'll notice 1,200-square-foot community room, I think I got a blow up here, basically a 1,200-square-foot community room that is a standalone room that has separate access, that has controlled entry to the main hallway. It is secure, it is safe, it's got its own kitchen, you know, bathrooms, storage area. You know, again, locked corridor to the residential spaces, to the main building, kitchens, bathrooms, We've got 37 additional parking spaces over and above the one-to-one ratio in the code. And the idea here is, okay, we really need to study this a little bit more to understand how many of the seniors, for example, that use the Kraus facility right now would actually live in a building like this. And in my conversations, I get the sense that there's probably a decent percentage that are looking for, for housing options. So in addition to that, how many non-resident seniors can be accommodated in a space like this on a regular basis? We would control flow through, through, through the programming that takes place. These are discussions that we still need to have, but this kind of space could probably readily accommodate, you know, 70-plus seniors on a regular basis. You know, the, the senior center there has 750 square feet, I think, pretty much on those floor plates. So this is a little bit bigger, and looking at it and just extrapolating, this can accommodate a little bit more, obviously, depending on the activity. So how does this relate to the building and the seniors in the building? But the additional parking should be able to accommodate, you know, based on percentage, 80% of the seniors at the Kraus Senior Center are, drive there themselves, more or less. So probably could accommodate 40, another 40 seniors here on a regular basis, we think could be more. But again, this is just a starting point, you know, maybe the square footage needs to be tweaked. There are, there are programming issues that need to be discussed. Obviously, this would be accessible, we'd have illuminated park walkways throughout the parking lot. We also, as you can sort of see here by the post, we extend the covered areas so that seniors would have dry, safe area for drop-off. Our contractors estimating that this space would cost about $209,000, just as it's designed right now. There's another $40,000 of sort of additional lost sources in the deal, because this is not space that is eligible for, for this particular type of tax credit. It would need to be backed out of the equation. So, you know, net-net, there's probably a quarter million dollar drag on the numbers at this point, just to give you a sense, just to give you a sense of, of the context. And again, that's, this is sort of our first stab, or second stab, at, at what a site plan would look like. You can see on the northwest side, yeah, the northwest side, I'm sorry, the additional parking spaces and how they connect to what we're proposing as sort of the, the public right-of-way, to be dedicated right-of-way to make sure that we can connect seniors over to Feinberg and get them over to, get them over to the park. And that obviously is up for discussion, as we know, it's one of the conditions. Nothing has been finalized except for the directive that there will be a pathway through. So, you know, in, in a nutshell, this is a little bit of an add-on, but the only point here is that, you know, we take this very, very seriously, this being the partnership with the village. This should be a win-win situation for everyone involved, and we're just hoping that this reflects our commitment to making sure that, you know, we're even going one step further. After we get through the technical discussion of setbacks and, you know, density per acre and those issues, again, this lock coverage, for example, only went up to 30, from 37 to 44%, just under 44%. We're trying to stay mindful and not trigger anything that is a ZPA issue from this point. I also, by the way, on this particular issue, have Jory Cervagia with me here from Ludwig and Company. Ludwig and Company is the slated property manager, they manage thousands of units, regionally highly respected firm, and she can add a little color commentary if we can just take another minute on, on what this, this piece could mean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, board members. I just want to say, what a wonderful opportunity for the seniors in this community to have a brand-new center or facility of their own, to come together, to meet new people, to have fun. You know, we would work with Parks and Recreation Departments, Jane Anderson with the Senior Club, other organizations, including ARP, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, the local senior services association, to provide, you know, a location for them to come and have a relaxing time with friends, to have board games, you know, possibly access to computers, monthly guest speakers, holiday luncheon, many trips, which I'm sure they already do, but, you know, just having this satellite location, it would, you know, add to, enhance the senior center. So again, you know, we work with all these local agencies to provide these services and programs for the seniors.
Is there any questions for property manager? What, are you going to have, will there be staff on-site all the time or during the day, or this will not be a manned building? Excuse me.
I do believe there'll be management on-site, but as far as with the, the senior center, you know, we'll, we'll schedule times for events and programs, and the seniors will have access to that building or that location.
Yeah, if I could just add, put, I think it's a great question, you know, the sticks and the bricks and the design. Thanks, Jory. That's one piece of it, but the operations is really where, where the rubber meets the road. You know, we need separate staffing for a facility like this, even though it is part-time. There are, you know, there are safety, security, insurance, liability issues, there's a whole host of issues that relate to the operations of this space, and that's where, you know, we haven't had a chance to engage with Mr. Clark yet and with Brian and others to kind of help us get through some of those issues. It's, there's a lot to discuss here, but this is what we think is a thoughtful first step. But yes, the building itself will have management and maintenance staff, you know, built right into the budget. It's part of the operating, operations of the development, but that space, just like at the senior center, needs, needs to be staffed as well.
I can extend to the board, it's obviously dependent upon there being a project at all, but I'm going to advise developer to talk to Dan Jones, the executive director of the Park District, further about details, arrangements, programming ideas, liability, you know, access and use issues. They, they'd like to talk to you directly at that level. So it's, obviously, if there's no project, that's not, you know, necessary, but that would be needed, and we need to come to some understanding of the way that this would operate for the board, you know, sake as well. Doesn't necessarily, per se, take the place of the Kraus Senior Center, but what it does do is provide a brand-new option as the community decides what the next steps are for senior programming. But from the standpoint of the village, having this capital dealt with through privatization as opposed to public dollars, you know, there's, there's some logic to it, but you have to decide that there's a building project that warrants it in the first place.
Would, do you want me to answer some of the questions that came out before?
Sure, I was just going to say, trustee Cavelli had a question.
I just had a question about the age.
Yes. Yes, good question. The 55 designation is something that is a designation tied to the tax credits and through the program administrator, basically Ida. Yes, we can restrict it to, I think the next level up would be 62 and older. The reality is, as I think we've mentioned before, the average age will be, we would expect, would be in the late 60s, 70s. Again, 85, 90% of these apartments may have a single resident in them, in fact. Somebody asked a question about number of beds. There are 38 one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, for a total of, I think it's 86.
Can you state that again?
I believe it's 86 beds, 38 ones, 24 twos.
Thank you.
And even though, you know, you may only have 10 or 15%, you know, the units with two residents, you know, a lot of these seniors and the residents would likely be downsizing from a homeownership situation, so the two-bedroom is often, we see, a preference, even with a single resident.
Any other questions? I was, during, watching the, listening to the ZPA, the last one, there was quite a bit of discussion about the sidewalk, extending the sidewalk along Three Oaks Road. Is that something that you've talked to staff about yet and how we could, because there was, talk about how, because I know that there's a slope there, but we've got a slope on the other side of the street, too, just so we can continue the walkway from in front of the post office through your property, you know, joining up with another sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it's definitely still open for discussion. I mean, the engineer was concerned, there were others concerned, just about the safety issue along at least half of that stretch. I think, I think the first, initially, the condition, before we started talking about it, was to put it right, basically, off the property line, maybe a foot off the property line, I don't recall exactly, but it's, it's pretty, pretty steep at that point. So there are real safety and security concerns there, but, you know, this is just a proposal that we think makes a lot of sense, but if staff doesn't agree, I mean, we're, we understand it's a discussion, but at the end of the day, it has to be connected.
The other open item was discussion, is there any further discussion about the elevations as drafted? Before this be called for a vote, if there's modifications for some or all of board members, it'd be good to start discussing them now, elevations while you're thinking about that, impact fees, building fund, impact fees, and then your viewpoint of the senior center addition and how that fits into a possible project. Because if there's any due diligence that needs to be done for some, for all, we just need to know so that we can do that before it's called for a vote.
Well, I have a couple of quick comments. I think, thank you for the additional work that you've done on this. I think it's, looks better than it did before, you're adding more to it. I, you know, I really like, and I think I had been a proponent of adding the senior center, a little bit differently than you have it laid out here, but at the end of the day, probably more square footage than what I was originally thinking. I like the additional parking that's going, I mean, assuming into that property that you were just going and let the village have, that we really have no use for anyway. The couple driveways that go into the back of the jewel, that's not an issue, so that is something that will take place if this is built?
Yes, yes, and I think actually there's parking along, along the property line. We're not showing it because we think there's a, maybe a safety issue there, but there are, you know, commercial vehicles and cars that park along that property line as well.
Okay.
But yeah, there's two, two means of ingress and egress there.
The only, only other two things I would just throw out, I said them before, so I'll say them again. I think this is, this property, this building is ripe for some sort of a couple of, with a clock tower or something on it, it would give it some pizzazz right over the front entrance. I think you'll recall, I mentioned that last time, I'm not such a stickler about the height, but I recognize that you want to stay within what the regulations are, but I think a clock would look nice there. And then I think we've already had some precedent within the community where another affordable housing developer had made a donation to the village, so, you know, to me, that's still a very important item for you to consider.
Right, and we're aware of, we're aware of the donation, we've been talking to Mr. Clark and Mr. Simmons about it, and, you know, I don't know what the right amount is, this is a different type of development, you know, we're adding significant costs here, and I would just say in response, you know, if the senior center is incorporated into this, you know, I'm concerned still about the operations and the cost of operations and whatever donation is appropriate, and I don't know when we talk about that or make that commitment, that maybe it's more appropriate to be escrowed for, to operate, to help operate that development, or to help operate that satellite center.
Well, you probably will learn more, I suppose, when you talk to the Park District.
Well, I was just going to say that, because in conversations, I was interviewed for their, their comprehensive plan or what their master plan or whatever they're calling it right now, and they've identified an extensive growth within their seniors and looking for new programming for them as well. I'd like to hear what the Park District has to say, if that's, is this something that they're willing to step up, you know, I don't want to speak for them at all, but it's a good opportunity, and I know that that's something that they were looking for.
We'll make that connection.
And I would suggest also, from a policy standpoint, we haven't had a lot of, you know, collective debate about this with this board, but again, you need to decide if this building project makes sense for care or not, but from a standpoint of senior use, it would set, you know, a marker for what we will provide. We know that the Kraus Senior Center is in tough shape, and, you know, this could be something that we could try to make work and be our limit until such a time, presumably when there might be a police station project in this community, when a community room might be possible with economies of scale. But to get us out of the game of being in the senior business, this might be a way to do that, respecting the taxpayer dollars by privatizing a good chunk of it, from a village standpoint.
Any questions on the side?
I'd still like to see the age increase.
You know what, I kind of agree with you with getting it up to 62.
Is that legally allowed? If it is.
Yeah, I think we can make the commitment to Ida to do that and just elect to go 62, and that would be part of the restrictive covenant.
I, I just, I, okay, go ahead, Brian.
To that, to that point, too, the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance is proposed amended to 55 and older, so any senior housing project that were to come in to the village would need to comply with that age restriction. So Del Webb is an example, and Huntley, their covenants are at 55 is their age limit for that type of facility, which has a mixture of single-family and multifamily housing. There's two ways the board can look at it, they can either approve the tax amendment as drafted, and then as part of the conditions for the project, have a different age restriction for this site, or amend the code to have that 62 age provision, and then the development would need to comply with that requirement.
Trustee Cavelli?
Sure, I just wanted to say that, I'm going to reiterate that I definitely support the need for this in our community, that we want to prevent, we want to provide housing for our seniors to be able to age here, and I have to go to a different area. I love the idea of the attachment there with the little senior center there, like a satellite office. I didn't even, I didn't even really think that would be something that could be utilized by the whole community, but I think that's value-added, huge, and I appreciate everything that you've done to try and come into compliance with everything that we do have to try and stay within that. And, and again, you know, I know that there's, there's talk about some of the reduced tax revenue that comes in, but I'm going to state again that, you know what, these are seniors that bore a lot of the tax burden for, for all of us when they weren't, when we had children go to school and they didn't. So I don't, I don't have a problem with saying that this, we should be looking at this in and of itself, not, you know, every project should be looked at, not in comparison to Garden Place Apartments or anything else. We look at this and we say, do we have a need in this community for this? And I think that's what we are tasked with here as representatives for our community, to look at this on its own merits, and I think that you've done a fine job with getting the ball rolling here, so I appreciate all of your time and effort. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one. What did you say the amount was to add the senior community room? What's the value of that?
The cost related to the parking and the grading and the extra space was about 209,000. I mean, just, that was an initial estimate from the contractor, but then there's additional sources that are lost because the space is not eligible for our funding source, so it represents 1.8, 2% of the whole building, so that sort of has to be backed out of how we calculate the equity that comes in.
You said 250, though, is it 209 or 250?
Well, it's, it's 209, 209, but the hit to us and to our pro forma is really 250, because we're also losing another 40,000 in sources.
Okay, I appreciate that you're willing to do that. I would much rather see us absorb that as an impact fee. I think that the village should maintain their own senior center, and I have concerns with it being connected with private development and their control over that room, but I think we could make use of that money to either improve the Kraus Center or do something else with it.
I'd kind of like to see a little bit of both, a little bit of the sourcing for, you know, our future development. It is, it is an impact to the community, and it is an impact to our policing, and that's something that this board has made aware to, you know, the larger developers that come here, that, you know, we would like to see some sort of a contribution to help us with our goals that, you know, you know, modernizing our policing facilities, and that's something that we're looking for. And you're asking us for something, we're asking you for something, we're, we're trying to get this, this project through. I'm, I believe in this project, I think it's a great opportunity, and on the other side of this, I think it's a great opportunity to have more senior community centers attached to this, because this is where a lot of the seniors can live, and we can utilize that as a community, as for the seniors, again, the residents that live there can use it as a party room or whatever they, whatever, I think it's a great asset, and I appreciate what you have done for, done for that, but like Trustee Dudik had said, you know, that we kind of have a precedent set right now, so I think I'd need to think hard about that number that we're looking for, for that.
Okay, and, and, you know, I really want to talk to the Parks District as well, because the obvious missing piece in the puzzle, if this is to be part of the building, is the cost of operations.
Dan Jones, please.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for?
I just, is there going to be inside your facility, if it didn't have the piece that we've spent so much time talking about on the end, is there some sort of a meeting room for the residents of the building somewhere?
Yes, we reduced the square footage within the building because of this, residents obviously would have, you know, access all the time to this. So if this didn't exist, there would be larger spaces, but you still have pretty, pretty good spaces, sorry, in the building, can't see it here, but the orange block there when you walk in the front door is a lobby area, waiting room area, there'll be, you know, computer terminals in that area. On the second and third floor, we're going to have, you know, exercise room, a library and a meeting room where those yellow blocks are. So yes, there's still adequate community space in the building, and if you decide you don't want the satellite senior center, we'd be able to enhance that a little bit.
So.
Including, including a common area that can, you know, classroom-style, where you can have a pretty large group of seniors with a kitchenette.
Okay, so I think for the benefit of the rest of the board, I had talked to Chris about this concept originally, but not in terms of a community senior center. I thought that the way the building lined up with the far west end, basically going into property that they were giving to the, to the village, which we were going to do nothing with, seemed to be an ideal spot to put a community room, not necessarily, again, to be shared with the seniors of the community, but to make an enhancement to the building, and I still feel that way. So it may not necessarily need to be quite as big as it is here, because I think, Dave, you were probably planning maybe for a little bit more broader audience, and, and I'm just, the reason I'm mentioning this is because I'm trying to touch a little bit on Jim's comment about whether we use some donation to improve the seniors, the Kraus Senior Center, or something else. I think there, that was not something that I had originally thought about, but I think there's some merit to that. Regardless, I do think this building and the west end of it, for the residents here, is ideally located, laid out for a room of that nature on that end, regardless of what you were doing inside for meetings. It's west, it's going to get the sunsets, it looks out over a lot of trees and some open space, so I would encourage you to keep that element, although it might be smaller or it might even be a little bit different in nature, if we don't use it, open it up for the whole community.
Appreciate that feedback, and again, all along, we've been trying to kind of respect that berm and the buffer with Bright Oaks and, and, you know, whatever's going to happen to Jewel Osco, if anything in the future, we're trying to stay, stay away from that corner, and we want to still try to respect, you know, that space, but if you, you know, it turns out we should be doing a standalone building there, we can do that, too, but I tend to agree, I like, I like the way this lays out currently, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Since the board has no other comments, I'll open up to the public comment, why don't we start with Dorothy? Do you have any comments to join in, or are all your questions answered?
Question, pardon me, statement, I compliment you all on your, on your patience, if you bear with me a little bit, too. I actually came for one thing, but then all of a sudden, some things were discussed here, and Jason, thank you, he's been courteous to me in the hall. You know, I'm looking at the ZBA, CPA, page three regarding the senior housing, the new classification. I'd like to see, this is why it came, but it came up. Your residential uses, petitioner, why he would be, they would want to go into all these other categories rather than base their own property, that the specific property that they're proposing. They are suggesting you are three B, one business, B3R business, B4R business, I don't know why you would want to reclassify business. I, I, I think that this, whoever should stay away from that, I would suggest that as each, now he's saying, suggesting that all these categories be senior housing, you guys brought it up. Why not something, an applicant comes up with something like this, like a planned unit development for each participant, person that comes in for these parcels? That's my observation. Modified zoning requirements related to the density of a senior housing development, senior housing development. There was another page here, how staff, pardon me, please, regarding how many spaces in town, empty lots in town, maybe small ones or scattered. Senior housing, they stopped short of identifying future locations for such development in general, the plan identifies locations that would be appropriate for multifamily use. Staff assess, suggested Route 14, Silver Lake Road, Three Oaks Road, what about Janus? I think if you all approve this change amendment, you're calling it, I think you're screwed, actually. Oh, I had some questions. Oh, I had some questions. We're talking affordable housing and seniors and the percentage of seniors. Nothing has been said. I guess my question is, what is the established market rate for a building like this other than senior? You have that?
Brian, would you come to the podium and help us with?
For this, for this type of two-bedroom, one-bedroom established market rate? Do you have that?
The.
I mean, in general.
The Illinois Housing Development Authority.
That's the new citizen.
Correct. The Illinois Housing Development Authority establishes what the thresholds are with, for the region that we live in, as far as the Chicago metropolitan area, of what is deemed to be affordable. So for rental units, it's based off the area median income of the area.
I guess I'm not asking affordable. If this type of building, what would a two-bedroom normally, an open market rate be?
I mean, what Ida determines as far as what, what is affordable defines what a maximum rent is that somebody at a certain income level could afford.
Not entirely affordable.
Correct. So anything above that threshold would be considered market rate. Anything below that threshold would be considered affordable. So there's a max of, of rent per month, which I believe I'm remembering from.
I think she just wants to know what market rate.
It's, I believe the, the level is around 600, in the $600 range per month for rent.
Now you're talking affordable housing.
Anything above that would be considered market rate.
Okay. So $600 affordable housing against 2,000 for the same apartment in another condition. So it's subsidized housing then, literally.
There would be rent, individuals that would live in the facility would have to meet certain income requirements.
Okay.
As an affordable housing project is.
Okay. It had never been mentioned in anything. That's why I had to ask. Again, when you all started that this was just a discussion meeting, I think you need a lot of discussion from what I've been hearing. And I think that was a good idea, Mr. Call to brought that. Did I have to drive older? Okay. Why I did come originally, I think I asked my questions. Why I did come, I, once City Hall, they asked Jason, traffic. And there was nothing about traffic in this proposal.
Do you want me to hand out the maps?
Well, I. Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I did.
She brought props.
Please forgive my graphics.
She said she would tell me if she wanted them distributed, so I thought she's going that direction, so I think so.
Just forgive my graphics. You know, I did not choose myself. I am Dorothy Wenzel, 24677 North Oxford Road slash Three Oaks Road. I travel Three Oaks Road five, six times a week back and forth. I shop in Cary. Everything you do as a village in here does affect your non-residents because we pay for the fire department, schools, the library, not your roads, I'm sorry. But we do shop in town, so there's sale taxes there. So that's really why I'm here, why it's concerned. I don't know if you can follow what I have there. Three Oaks Road actually at this point has 5,300 per day. And if you look at my little tri graphics going all the way east, that does not diminish till Ross and Bridge Road. Now, getting back, if you look at Silver Lake Road, that is a very heavy travel road from Route 14 all the way to, what's their next village up there, Oakwood Hills. That's a very heavy travel road. There's a church up there, there's very vacant property up there also. If you go to this new amendments that these people are proposing, you can also have senior housing or who knows what else this new classification is. And what I'm getting at again is the density. And I, I really came for Three Oaks Road, but now that I, I've seen this project here and any future projects like it is going to affect anybody that's traveling these roads. So I don't know what the alternative is as far as this particular housing project, but I think there, I think you guys have a lot of questions to ask about it too, which you have tonight. I have one question while the lot plan is still up there. You can see their lot line. I asked Jason, that little yellow spot up there, is that what's going to be maybe dedicated park? Jason suggested to me.
Well, are you talking about, we don't have a Jason, are you talking about Jake?
Jake.
I just said, no, if you were talking to somebody else that's giving you advice that we don't know about.
You have to have a new member on board.
Like, you, you never know in this town, you know?
I'm sorry. But what Jake did suggest to me, that the village was going to be taking over the care of that land for park. Pardon? It's going to be given to the?
Potentially.
Potentially. So you have to take care of it anyway. My other concern to Jake was traveling this way west, it's just a personal opinion. I counted 18, I don't know how tall, maybe 30-foot tall pine trees, which I'm not an arborist, arborist. They look very healthy to me. So my concern was if those were going to be preserved, some look like they're on the right of way and some look like they're on their property. Just some statements I wanted to make for your consideration. I don't know if there was anything else. Thank you so much for your time. And I wish you well on your project, everybody, and you guys too. I mean, you're putting a lot of time in it, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Pardon?
Thank you for your comments. Chuck Fox.
Nothing like being the last speaker at 10 o'clock.
We don't know yet. There's other people here that we.
I hope so.
That may not have signed in yet.
Yeah. My name's Chuck Fox. Loos and I live at 359 High Road in, of course, here in Cary. I'm 72 years old and as you can see, I'm a little guy. I mention that because, although my grandson, I should say that, I'd like to clarify that contrary to what my grandson thinks, I haven't always been 72 years old, but I have always been a little guy. And I guess in part, my message tonight is that I've always been concerned about what I see as people bullying other people. And when I attended the last meeting, I had some serious concerns when I left the meeting. I heard some comments from a particular trustee in his conversation with Mr. Berg that, that just left a really bad feeling. A couple of comments, you were all here, you heard the comments that were made, so I'll just make a couple of reference points. One, and the first conversation dealt with the primary marketing area, the conversation between trustee Kostler and Mr. Berg. And the second reference point would be the federal tax credit. And I'll just make a couple of observations that I wanted to point out, a couple of questions that I have related to comments that were made. I think anyone who read the information that put out by Pearl or Mr. Berg understood the concept of the primary marketing area and that it included, for lack of a better term, suburbs of places like Lakin Hills, Crystal Lake or whatever. So people that lived outside of Cary, but within the primary marketing area. Mr. Berg started the comment, the conversation, repeated a concern that he had at the last meeting. He was repeating a concern he'd heard that it could be that people would move, residents would come from, in his term, resident, people from far and wide to occupy rather than this facility servicing the local community for, for residents. Somehow in that conversation, it appeared to me that trustee Kostler was unable to make the distinction between non-Cary residents who live within the primary marketing area and who live without. And as I thought, as that conversation went on, I, I felt like that trustee Kostler didn't really give Mr. Berg an opportunity to explain the point he was making. He was accused of making a point about the residents moving in from outside areas. And in reality, he was taught, so he was, Mr. Kostler, trustee Kostler, I felt like was putting words in Mr. Berg's mouth about his comments. When, when Mr. Berg appeared to, tried to clarify the comment, trustee Kostler talked over him and ended the conversation, moved on to another issue, made the comment, I didn't appreciate you selling it that way. And that result was, Mr. Berg was only referring to people within the primary marketing area. Similarly, trustee Kostler's comment regarding the tax credit, rather the analogy that he used to explain the tax credit, I thought was unfair. As one trustee later said, who cares where the tax credit comes from? The tax credits are appropriated by Congress for this specific purpose. So the discussion regarding the home, the tax credit, which was interest deductions, was really not necessary. The question I had later that came in, later in the conversation was in reference to the Feinberg Court property. Trustee Kostler made the statement, most people in Cary don't agree that this use is appropriate. My question is, where are the statistics supporting that? Are there any statistics supporting the statement that most people don't agree that within Cary that this use is appropriate? Are there any statistics supporting that comment?
Yeah, the feedback I get from residents.
From residents. So just a random, there really is no scientific survey, no numbers, you have to support that?
There's no scientific survey from Mr. Berg either.
But he didn't say, make that comment. So if there aren't any, then it just seems like an unfair statement to make that we really don't know. Two additional comments that were made. One was for people on a limited budget, they'd be better if they were close to a grocery store like Aldi's, not the most expensive store in Cary, followed by a comment to Mr. Berg that said, everything you point out as a plus to your location can be offset with the other location in Cary. Sounded like a pretty ludicrous comment, both of those to me. Apparently trustee Kostler feels seniors would be better served with amenities like the preschool and the garage and a beauty parlor, limited product supermarkets and a location which has a full product line, two drugstores. We know how important prescriptions are to seniors. An excellent restaurant, hardware store, barber shop, a park, complete with a fishing pond, pavilion, et cetera. And of course, the list goes on. So, you know, again, I think that was a pretty silly comment. One final comment, trustee Kostler indicated that he only received two letters in support of this development project after eight or 10 people were here, took time out of their schedules to come and voice their support for the project. So if we're going to recognize those two letters, shouldn't we also be recognizing the people who are here tonight? So those are the comments. I, I could go on, but the point is, I thought that the common courtesy is really the point here. I thought that Mr. Berg deserved a little more respect than, than he was given while he was here. Simple respect goes a long way, I think, in the development of a project. And I think that the reputation of the community over the long term, if those kind of comments continue, could be adversely affected as well as the development of the community.
It's an interesting perspective. Sir. When, when, your first issue there that you are trying to gig me on is that I had a problem with the market territory of this. This is being marketed as a facility for Cary residents. That's all I said. It is not being marketed that way when the area that Mr. Berg includes in his statistics are outside of Cary. That was my point.
I don't think that's how the conversation went. The way the conversation was, you asked Mr. Berg to repeat a comment he made regarding a, a concern that he had heard, Mr. Berg had heard, related to people from outside of the area, meaning other parts of the state. His term was far and wide. That's what he said. The concern was people coming from far and wide, moving into this facility rather than serving the community.
Once again, it's marketed as a project for Cary residents. That's what I wanted to see if Cary residents were going to live there. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm a trustee of this village. I am supposed to look out for Cary residents.
But if you look at the materials, the materials included the primary marketing area. So the implication of what you said was that those people outside of Cary proper, within the primary marketing area, would be considered people from far and wide. In reality, those are local people. You're, you're dealing with semantics.
I did not say that.
And oftentimes trustee Kostler, in my opinion, oftentimes it's not what's said, but the way it's said. And you, you really came across to me as extremely negative. You didn't give him an opportunity to explain.
So let me ask you this.
The term property.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Please.
Are you okay with the petitioner making up a story about something that was said in a meeting that didn't occur?
What story did he make up?
It was in, you go back and watch the.
Mm-hmm.
He, he claimed that I made claims in a meeting that he wasn't at that were totally untrue. He fabricated them.
Well, I'm here in generalities. I'm not here in any specifics.
You know, I'm going to intervene here. All due respect, I think this is, this is not, you know, I, I, to respect our trustee here, that this isn't the direction we need to be going. I appreciate your comments and stuff like that, but I really feel that we need to move on to our next topic.
Sure. I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Mr. Fox, I know your house is for sale. Are you planning, can you just, do you mind sharing what you're planning on doing, what your plans are?
Simply downsizing.
Okay.
In the local area.
I know how it helps as your house is sitting there.
Probably somewhere in the primary marketing area.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the village board regarding the Pearl development? Thank you very much. Moving on to other topics here. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution R16-04-06, an amendment to the employment agreement between Patrick and, Patrick M. Finland and the village of Cary.
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Mayor. As the village board is aware, non-union wage adjustments were deferred and delayed as part of the current year fiscal budget to the uncertain, due to the uncertainty of shared revenues the village receives from the state of Illinois. As the current fiscal year progressed, it became apparent that the state budget negotiations were continuing much longer than expected and well beyond the term of the current fiscal year. Village Board authorized the issuance of merit-based, performance review-driven, non-union wage adjustments in early 2016. Chief Finland's wage adjustment requires an amendment to his employment agreement with the village of Cary. Chief Finland's current annual salary is $110,000. It is recommended that his new salary be set at 117,500. This would be his first wage adjustment since beginning his village service in January 2014. An additional increase to 125,000 is recommended to be inserted into the employment agreement on April 1, 2017, and is subject to performance review process of the village. Salary range established for our chief is 110,232 to 148,813. The village recently reviewed that salary range with outside assistance to validate its external and internal comparability positions within the village as well as external comparables in the industry. The position pointer target salary is 121,255. Again, this is proposed resetting Chief Finland's salary in the manner described as recommended. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to ask what happened to trustee Chapman? Where's he at?
He's ill and he's not coming back tonight.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion and then table this until we have a full board meeting, a full board, or amend the, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have a full board sitting up here. And if there, if there's not a second, that's fine.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay.
What I'm motion to table first. Roll call for a motion to table.
Okay. The Calpine? No. Kraus?
Yes.
Dudak?
No.
Cavelli?
Yes.
Kostler?
Yes.
The motion is tabled.
Administrator.
Pardon me?
Administrator's report.
Yep.
Thank you. Tonight, under the administrator's report, a couple of items that were deferred from the committee of the whole agenda quickly. From the standpoint of electrical aggregation for the village of Cary, the village is in the middle of a, literally in the middle of a three-year agreement with Constellation Energy for electrical services for the village of Cary. And participate- The rate in the current village program is 7.4 cents per kilowatt hour. I, through discussion with the board at the last set of meetings, I've initiated dialogue with our electrical aggregation consultant, NYMAC, and I'm advising that I be allowed to continue a process of talking to Constellation conceptually about at least an option to consider of an additional year on the deal if the rate is lowered substantially from where it is today, back to market rates. I'm not certain that they'll do that. I think that's an approach that we can have. The other approach is end the term of the arrangement at the end of the contract and communicate to residents very aggressively that ComEd might be a better option and that they should revert back to it. We might want to do that regardless. I'd like to preserve an option with Constellation for at least us to consider, which I believe I can bring back to the last board meeting. If it doesn't seem sensible, then I'll advise that we advise residents to revert back to ComEd, and we'll come up with a marketing plan to do so. So any questions on that tonight? More information back to you at our next board meeting. Hearing none, next item. There's a resident that'd like to speak if you could come to them.
Dan Maschilo, 1213 South Route 13. Do you know about the ComEd RTTP program?
Can you help you?
Real-time pricing.
Yes.
Okay, they come and install a new meter.
Yes.
Because I fell into, you know exactly what you're talking about, with Constellation. I saw some chatter on the social channels, "Look at your bill." And I looked at my bill, and I went back months and months and months and months, and when it changed, the bill just went up. And so somebody had also socially chatted about the real-time pricing program, and I got on that, and...
So you've got a new smart meter?
Got a new, we've got a new smart meter, and, you know, I think the highest rate I've ever paid for an hour at a time is maybe seven cents, possibly. I'd have to look, but it seems to make a lot of sense.
I think they're cheaper than that now, aren't they?
Well, it depends on what time of the day it is, but it's extremely competitive. There's a whole industry built around this deregulated electricity aggregators, you know, and commissions are involved, and, you know, a lot of stuff like that. So when the idea was proposed, I don't know how much you knew about that industry and how they make the money and how they, you know, do what they do. But in retrospect, it's, you know, it's probably something left better to not agree to do three years at a time because, you know, it's like an insurance company, they need to win in the end.
Yeah, I can explain that our first agreement was for a two-year term, and the average resident home that participated in it saved $300 over the term of that arrangement. As we experienced in what I remember to be the first quarter 2013, we had a winter that was fairly rough, and it affected market rates for various commodities. And so we saw in the summer of 2013, the effect of that in the aggregation agreements. The board looked at length about its options, looked at one, two, and three-year deals, green energy, no green energy, decided to have to do a three-year agreement with the knowledge that it could be opted out by any resident anytime to provide it as a service. At that point, there were still marginal savings, marginal savings. It wasn't upside down like it is now. And I will say that some seniors in the community that I speak with, I've probably spoken to 500, 600 residents in the course of the last year or two on aggregation. Many look to the village to work out an arrangement because they don't like the mail, the calls. Unfortunately, the rates are upside down, and that's why we're taking the initiative to look at it now and see what our options are. I'm not certain this municipality will participate in aggregation moving forward. That's not to say the last one wasn't well thought out, it was, but, you know, the economics of it are different than they were four years ago.
Thank you for that. Listen, it's late, I just wanted to say RTTP. It seemed like not a lot of people knew about the program.
Thank you.
You bet.
Next update, quick update on the Metro project, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. The village has worked with representatives of Union Pacific Railroad, who has ownership interests in the land at the downtown train station. We were visited by folks from the real estate office of Union Pacific from Omaha, Nebraska at the village hall last week, along with representatives from the Chicago office. As I briefed the board and others through the media when asked, there has been some progress regarding the crossing that still exists at the station. Back in 2005, there was actually a second crossing that was removed with no notice by the railroad. Village was quite upset about it at the time. It happened, it's done, it won't come back. This one was forecasted by Union Pacific when we spoke to them regarding the land acquisition that's involved in this project. They've indicated to us last week that there are 15 near misses that have occurred at the station crossing in the past three years, measured by reports from the locomotive engineer to dispatch. And so there appears to be a business case to make some improvements. Immediately upon receiving that information, we determined that it means that they'll keep it open, they're not forcing a closure. If there's further evidence down the road of significant issues, that can change. However, they've put on the table the concept of a signalized pedestrian crossing gate that's also present at the station facility at the village of Villa Park on the west, in the west suburbs. The issue is cost. Metro as the lead agency on this, it's their railroad service, we are the lead agency on the station project. Metro is taking the gate project downtown to seek assistance from either their own agency and/or federal resources for the up to $500,000 in cost. The work is proposed to be completed by Union Pacific staff and designed by their staff. We're still working through the details, and presumably, our objective is to minimize local share cost of that and cooperate with safety enhancements as part of the station project. With that said, Director Morimoto and I are finalizing negotiations with a firm for the architectural design of the buildings within the next week or so. We're waiting for correspondence from Union Pacific by April 14 in writing, which I will need before I would bring to the agenda a consideration of the agreement for architect services. This letter will indicate next steps on the station crossing, gating, as well as concur with what I believe to be a minimal cost that they're willing to transfer the land to the village for to get the project done, which is good news. And I'll let you know if that looks to be right for the April 19 agenda. If not, it will have to be punted till May. Any other feedback regarding the project, I'm happy to answer. But that's the next step, considering an architect design services contract as soon as the next board meeting. Are there any questions about that?
You said, "When would be the next time?" April 19? Otherwise, you'd move it to May?
Right.
Because I'd like to move it to May, and then on the April 19 meeting, have a discussion what Dave and I found out when we interviewed the architects, and be able to come back and share it with the other trustees. Because he walked away from there, and I walked away from there, thinking that this is the wrong direction that we should be going in terms of tearing down the station and putting up a narrow, skinny station on the other side of the tracks. Just, and that is, we feel that it's overkill, that we have a $2 million grant in place that could cover expenditures to upgrade the current station that we have, in addition, put up two warming shelters on the other side of the tracks. That would give us what we need, buy us time until we can possibly find something that might be an appropriate location for a new train station, or just keep the current one that we have. But I think it's dangerous to lose that station as we have it and just go with a warming station with a quasi-ticket booth and a closet in it. So I'd like to have a discussion with Dave here also to kind of discuss what we saw, what we think, how we feel about things moving forward.
That's up to the board. I want to explain that we need to consider the volume of agenda items on the April 19 meeting. I'm not saying you shouldn't have a conversation, I'm explaining that you have Meyer material, you have potentially Pearl coming back, there are other business items on that agenda. So just determine what your appetite is for the length of the meeting. I mean, I'm certainly explaining that 19th is the earliest that I'd needed to come back at all to stay on schedule. I wouldn't know until the 14th of April or sooner when I get Union Pacific's letter, if 19th's even possible. But I'm explaining that as we head into May and beyond, without a contract, we're now missing the dates on the station project. So we can also consider a special meeting to catch up on some items, I'm glad to do that. That's up to the board. I don't know that at 10:30 at night, we're very effective after four and a half hours.
I agree, I think we've got a lot of stuff coming up, so a special meeting would be fine, or can we do it in committee of the whole? I would be interested to see, it's a big, it's a big product, or a big item, so I would be interested to see what trustee Kraus and trustee Chapman, why they changed their minds. I'd like to better understand that. So, you know.
So, the mayor's board.
I'm at a loss. I think that we need to move forward with this. We had a resolution that this board unanimously sent to Metro and UP that we're going to do this. It makes good sense. They're never going to build a train station on the opposite side of the tracks. They're making good on a great opportunity for us to improve our downtown. I think we just need to continue, we can't keep micromanaging and moving backwards on these things. We made a decision as a board, I think we need to move it forward. I appreciate what Jeff has been saying, he's, he has been consistent through the entire time that he wants the train station on the Maplewood property. I was in a meeting with Jeff, with staff, and they said, "Under no circumstances will they ever put the train station on the Maplewood property." And, you know, there comes a time when we just need to move along. I see where Jeff wants to go with this, but it's physically not going to be able to happen. And there's nowhere really else we should, that it can go. We have a $2 million grant that's going to help us move our transportation better. We've got an opportunity to redevelop our downtown that would further help us get credible developers that want to invest in the village of Cary. It will, it's a huge give back to the current commuters that we have already. We've been talking about this, we've been promoting this, we've had many different meetings on these things, so I, it's my opinion that we just need to move forward on these.
But Union Pacific said, even if we tear down that station, they don't want us holding fairs and art festivals on that property.
It will be, it will be open space. I understand what you're saying, we've had long conversations about it, I get it, but Metro won't do it.
And even if, let's take Maplewood out of the equation, I just have some concerns with going to these narrow, it's going to be like a trailer in between the tracks and 14. Giving up our station that we currently have, we could upgrade that to make it look at least presentable, use some of the $2 million to give it, you know, have a little control over the architectural details that we might want to extend the roofline, change the roofline, do things like that, not lose that station.
Well, it doesn't mitigate, it doesn't mitigate the safety concerns that they've been worried about.
Well, exactly. So why then spend on top of the $2 million grant that we're given to do things, then why go and turn around and end this newspaper article I thought was a little misleading because it's...
I'll be glad to answer any questions that exist.
You know, it states process two and a half to three million, so, but we put in our budget tonight, 1.16 million for the project, and now we have another $500,000 cost for the crossings, that this is just going to continue to grow and grow and snowball into a bigger cost than what we were anticipating.
Well, I think those were estimates, and I think that they were looking for outside funding for that from what Chris had updated us all on before on that. So, you know, I understand, it's a passionate thing, but there comes a time when we need to just hold our ground and move these things forward. It's my opinion.
Well, to answer the question, we need to set a date for a meeting then, in the, you know, third week April timeframe, with that issue and isolation and anything else that comes up off the list that we could efficiently go through, because the 19th doesn't sound like the right night. So I would propose that we submit dates to the trustees for work schedules and the like regarding, starting at the 21st of April and right around that timeframe, because the issue, as long as it lingers, just creates other issues until it's decided. And it's already been decided, but the re-review affects current negotiations with Metro, Union Pacific, our state legislators, the public, et cetera, so is that acceptable to the trustees?
Why don't we send you some dates then at the end of April, and then see what...
Yeah, anything, April 20th through the end of April that you're available, with the exception of Sundays, please let me know. That's all I have tonight. We have one staff update on the electronics recycling, just to get on the record for the public.
Yes, just a reminder that the village's now annual electronics and paper shredding, electronics recycling and paper shredding event will be held on Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Public Works Facility at 454 Cary Wood Circle. So for residents, IDs will be checked, but we appreciate the support. We've got a lot of phone calls already just from the notice that we put in the utility bills. So it looks like we're going to have a good response from the community, and we look forward to another successful event.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any future agenda items in discussion by the village board? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss closed session minutes. Item 2C-21, in real estate purchase or lease, item 2C-5.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll start. I will entertain a motion to return from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, adjourned.